County Board of Commissioners, for June twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen, let us rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to a republic which is safe, one nation like a garden, united with liberty and justice for all.
There will now be a moment of silence. Thank you. I would ask that electronic devices be silenced or put on airline mode. I do apologize the fact I have to keep mine live. I have a family member with medical issue that I'm needing to possibly keep a monitor on. All right. The purpose of our meeting this evening is a budget amendment number seventeen, and then the budget hearing and presentation by our county manager. So we can have the budget amendment now? Good evening.
Good evening. The first item is for the focus grant. There is a period four amount, and also some additional revenues that were received, and we had the corresponding expenses to match that. The second one is for the timber receipts. We got more receipts which we paid right back out to schools. And then we have the Bernard flood cleanup. We had some revenues coming for that, and then we also have the expenses to go out. We have the Hot Springs Internet Grant. We got those funds of fifty thousand dollars. And so we got revenue, and we'll have the expenses to go with that as well. We have some insurance proceeds for the gate repair that was messed up at the sheriff's office, and then we will also have the expenses for that where we were fixing that. In transportation, there's just, and there's a few in emergency management. We had some salary increases due to payouts, so we increased those lines. And then we're decreasing contingency for those items where we don't have the revenues.
And an adjustment in contingents. Okay. Are there any questions, gentlemen? Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment number seventeen?
So much.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving budget amendment number seventeen, please raise your right hand. Budget amendment seventeen is approved unanimously. Thank you. Safe travels. Have a great weekend. All right, at this time, we will ask the county manager to present the proposed two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget. Of course?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, for the work that you have done leading up to this to discuss the county's, to prepare the county's budget for this year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And tonight, I will just take you through some of the things that you all have already discussed. I just want to highlight some of the significant items that are in the proposed budget, and also give a little information about how we handle the budget here, and how we, in some ways, got to where we are today. So the PowerPoint roughly follows the budget message that you have in front of you, that has been in your possession for about ten days, and then also the budget ordinance, which you have also had, which is the actual form of document that when you adopt a budget, this lays out it, and will be in that. So I'll put that here for you at this time. But discussing the budget for Madison County, our general approach to how we budget is the best way to realize savings and do the best that we can with people's money is to constantly be looking at the best practices throughout the year. So in the four and a half years that I've been county manager, all position vacancies have been evaluated. Whenever someone leaves, we look for restructuring or elimination of those positions where they're posted. Throughout that time, in those four years, we have eliminated fifteen full-time positions that were feasible. We have shared some positions between departments. If we don't have full-time work for someone, we don't fund a full-time position. We also look at contracted services to make sure we're spending money efficiently. Some examples of that, just a few of those for different times past few years, by going to a VoIP phone system and save thirty-one thousand dollars in recurring telephone service costs. We have saved eighty-nine thousand dollars in recurring annual savings to the workers' contributions, and we're currently looking at a new copier service that we will not realize any benefit of until the fall, but we're looking at those right now. Also, as the budget's adopted, it is my job as the budget officer, after you all have adopted the budget, to make sure the county spends those funds according to plan. Now, we changed those throughout the year. You just adopted budget amendment number seventeen, so seventeen times the budget's been amended, because our budget is just an estimate at the beginning of the year. But we do look monthly at all department expenses. Our review those, and the finance officer reviews those. We are, work very hard to make sure that any one-time revenues, such as sell property, go to one-time expenses, or they go to savings. And anytime we have unexpected increased mid-year revenues, we don't just offset those with an increased expense. Our first priority is to offset any other revenues that are coming in below projection. Our second priority is to contribute that to savings. Third priority is to cover any unavoidable expense that we have for that year, and the fourth priority is for a new item or service. So I know all of you have heard complaints from people who've been told, "We can't buy that right now because you haven't covered your salaries for the year," or something like that. That's why, and that's how we have to keep that in line. And sometimes you have to be the bad guy to make those things happen. But our department heads do a very good job of doing that themselves, so it's generally very easy as we go. Some budget trends that we have seen the last several years. We have seen several increased costs in some of our larger contracted service items, the biggest of which is health insurance. We, that is a nationwide trend, as we know. It's a huge discussion. This year's budget includes a hundred and two thousand dollar increase in our employee health insurance cost. We will now be budgeting nine thousand dollars for every full-time employee for health insurance. Of course, utilities, from electricity, water, propane, all those things fluctuate, and of course, we had a few good years where motor fuels were going down, and now they've gone back up. We have seen increased recurring revenue due to the increase in the property tax collection rate. So in two thousand twelve, it was ninety point, it's actually ninety point zero five, not ninety point five. By two thousand eighteen, it had increased to ninety-six and a half percent. This year, it looks like it's gone down slightly back to ninety-five percent. We're talking through that with the tax office. We want to get that up to ninety-seven or ninety-eight percent. But just going to the ninety-five has brought in, let's see, five hundred and four thousand dollars in additional recurring revenue that comes in without having to increase any rate that people pay. We're continuing to step down estimated revenues from collection of unpaid property taxes from prior years. Since two thousand thirteen, the county has collected four million dollars in back taxes. That's tied to the same effort as the collection rate, but it's a different pot of funds. That's money that was not paid from up to ten years back. It's good to go and collect it. We need to collect it, but once you have collected it, you can't need it again. So it's a one-time revenue source, and this budget proposal estimates lower revenues from this source. If we are lucky and still bring in twice what we budgeted, then the excess money can go toward our fund balance and long-term savings. Some trends with the sales tax. Revenues with sales tax are increasing statewide, but the sales tax from in-county sales continues to trail our neighboring counties, which we would expect it to trail bumping, that I think one month of their revenues probably beats our entire year. But we are also behind Yancey and Mitchell County. We have twenty-one thousand people. Yancey County has about eighteen thousand. Mitchell County has about fifteen thousand. There are a number of reasons for that. One is they're both a little farther away from competing business centers. They don't have as high an out commute rate for workers. We have about half our workforce travels out of the county to work. They spend a lot of money while they're doing that. So it just sort of ends up that way, but we're slowly seeing that return. We're seeing a big benefit from the additional sales tax that the General Assembly implemented on services a few years ago. That was targeted for counties like ours that had a high bleed rate, I guess, going out. So we have seen good money coming from that. Otherwise, a lot of the things that we, that we also sell here aren't separate from the tax. The list of items that are taxed and not taxed is quite extensive. Some budget trends in this same chart is in their budget message, but just over the last several years, the county has increased the local per pupil funding for public schools' current expense. We were ninety-third in the state out of a hundred counties in two thousand twelve. The most recent information from the Public School Forum that does that study puts us at eightieth. Those numbers are two years old. We are moving up. We expect to be higher now, but of course, other counties are also making changes as we go. But we have been one of the biggest movers in our ranking on that over the last four or five years. For capital outlay, county has a backlog, as many local governments do, of deferred maintenance needs. We're sitting in one of them. Courthouse is in major need of complete renovation, and we are also in need of auxiliary court space. We are the tide. In some ways, we're the busiest courtroom, court calendar. In some ways, we're second to Watawa in our judicial district. We're the only courthouse that does not have backup court space. We can use mutually, we can find space that can have use by others because we don't need to have something sitting empty. But there are six or seven times a year where we need to have that ability to move if we're going to continue to work through this building for the next ten years possible. So as you know, courthouse, over several years, starting in two thousand twelve, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars was spent. That project was started in two thousand twelve. We have no full plan for what the project would entail. There was no full budget set aside for what it would entail, and they were basically going along as they went and did very good work. But because there was no looking at the big picture, we ended up stopping midway and are having, have been looking since then at how to get that work started back and look at as one big plan. So the most recent work was finishing up on that, and many square units were finished installation in two thousand seventeen. Also, county senior center is in need of renovation. It's just over forty years old. Very good space, but it needs some updates. It needs some additional parking. And our animal shelter, at some point in the next few years, is in need of expansion. County's vehicle fleet is aging, and significant funds are being spent on repairs and maintenance. We've made progress starting with public safety vehicles the last few years, but we're still catching up there, and we have some major issues there that we have not funded in the past. We did develop a draft capital improvement plan that was presented to the board in December of two thousand seventeen. We have started in two thousand eighteen's budget of allocating funds each year toward capital outlay, but that seven-year plan has not been funded to date. So at least we're dated on paper. At least we're getting, we're about a year ahead now, but we have not been able to set aside the funds to fully fund that capital outlay. Regarding employee pay and benefits, key positions are not paid salaries that are competitive with similar counties and municipalities and other organizations in our region. We have personnel with supervising responsibilities and on-call duties that kind of eat up their lives in some ways, who have the option of taking the lower responsibility job in a nearby county for the same unpaid. Our minimum starting wage for employees is eight thirty-nine per hour. That's obviously not enough to support the cost of living in Madison County. It was seven twenty-five when we started a few years ago, but that is still obviously not enough. And we have continued to make up, to try to make up for our pay issues. We do offer a very high-quality insurance plan. We have no employee premium. Our deductible for the employee is seven hundred dollars. We cover not only the premium, but also up to fifty thousand dollars in claims, and then our secondary insurer picks that up, so the employee is not going to cover that. Very good plan. The state Department of Labor no longer offers a plan that good, and most organizations are headed toward a tiered system. It's a good plan, but it's also expensive. Looking at the budget development process for two thousand twenty, again, constant review by department heads and management throughout the year. Back around February, we asked all county departments, and they did submit budget requests for next year that had expenses that were no longer, that were no higher than the current year's budget amount. And any requested expansion items they had, they listed separately, so that we could take a look at those and see what could go in, what's possible to be funded. In a few months since then, I will review the department requests and revise those based on actual trends or known changes in circumstances. That might include a small increase in an item if it's clear that they're going to run out of fuel this year. They can't just stop in March of next year, so we'd increase their fuel budget. If they have not spent any of their office supply money when they submit the budget in March, and they've always spent in June, that's probably been a bit, so some things went up, some things went down. So we balanced that budget based on existing revenue rates. We presented that to the board for the first budget workshop in May. It actually had a little bit of a surplus to fund just continuing operations without funding any of a number of critical requested items. So that initial budget included a hundred and two thousand dollars and a state mandate increase in our employee retirement contribution. It also included, and these numbers actually do match within rounding, a hundred and two thousand dollar increase in the cost of employee health insurance. It included the elimination of a vacant building inspector position that has been empty since October, and has been working just fine. If that picks up in the future, we'll have time to accommodate that change. We will also see increased revenues for permits to fix that. Like I said before, it increases and decreases various lines based on actual projections. New revenues and expenses, which is a net revenue increase associated with housing and juvenile inmates, and included no increase for, in funding for nonprofits. The budget did not include funding to bring all employees to a minimum pay rate of ten dollars per hour. It did not include funding to account for major pay inequities in departments that we discussed just a minute ago, where we've seen turnover and difficulty recruitment is directly tied to wages. It did not include funding to reduce K-three class sizes as mandated by the General Assembly, and it did not include funding for courthouse renovation or any other construction, major construction, including funding for basic maintenance throughout the year, but that was about it. In May, we all met a couple of times, and then once in June, and we walked through the expense revenue lines in all departments. Unfunded items, which we do every year, we show a list of what's not in the budget. Those are reviewed and prioritized for discussion. There was consensus during that discussion to leave all nonprofits at their current funding levels, with the exception of a new item for two thousand dollars that will actually not go directly to a nonprofit, but it will be in the parks and rec budget to cover lighting expenses for baseball fields that we own. Other sports are using facilities where utilities are either covered by the county or the school system, so they were kind of the odd sport path. So we will now be covering that. We also discussed options for additional potential budget reductions. Even though the budget is balanced, there's always the option of cutting something out in order to fund one of the items that wasn't funded. And there was discussion of the impact of additional revenue from property tax increase, and it was reviewed at the follow-up meeting. So based on all of that discussion, you have now your proposed budget for discussion. I'll walk you through where that ended up. The total size of it, we have several funds, of artist of which is the general fund, which is twenty-five point nine million dollars. That funds most of the county's operations, court tax, law enforcement, what we give to education. We also have our landfill enterprise fund, which operates all of our, operates our transfer station, our construction demolition landfill, our recycling program, and our collection centers. And that's funded mostly from the disposal part, tipping fees, some grants, and some money with the sale of recyclables. We have a nine-one-one fund, which is funded by telephone surcharges. That funds nine-one-one equipment and management. All of our dispatchers or our telecommunications are funded through the general fund, through county funds. We have our occupancy tower tourism and development authority, which is funded by occupancy tax. They're anticipating two hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars in revenues and expenses next year. And then we have the combined fire district taxes of one point three mil, one point four million. That is not a combined amount. Each fire department has their own amount. Nobody has any review of that. That's what the total is, can be wild. So the proposed budget does provide adequate funding for ongoing operations at county government. It funds legislative mandate to produce class size. It funds some of the high-part of building renovation projects, along with equipment and vehicle purchases. It maintains our health insurance plan as it's been. It brings all employees to ten dollars an hour. It addresses a lot of competitive employee pay, that is less difficult to pension and recruitment. It includes additional revenues discussed and expenses, but a net revenue increase for the housing of juvenile inmates, the Madison County Jail. And of course, it includes to fund all of these things, the jail board, revenue from a three-cent property tax increase. General fund revenues and expenditures have generally been on a slight increase trend. We had in sixteen, seventeen, our revenues, we had a big year for prior year's taxes that year, and we had about a million dollar surplus that year. Year before, we barely made even. And then seventeen, eighteen, it was maybe a couple of thousand dollars, actually, where our revenues came in under expenditure. We're finishing this year very close. We expect to have our revenues exceeding expenditure, but it's getting tighter and tighter. And every time, it's okay to do that because we have savings and fund balance, but it's not okay to do that every year because when you dip into savings, it will eventually get it. Every time you're dipping into fund balance, not contributing to it, you're delaying some of your larger construction items, things of that nature. All of this is not in chart form, but in your budget message. Our major, our, all of our general fund revenues, current year property taxes, will make up forty-seven percent of projected revenues. Intergovernmental revenues is a major increase because of the juvenile program at the jail. So that is money coming from other government sources. So we're seeing that source go from probably what has been number three to number two. Sales tax is next. Various fees, including register of deeds, building inspections being the big ones, and then a lot of smaller ones throughout the departments. Current year vehicle taxes, which is also a property tax, any increase in the rate also applies there. The prior year's property taxes, at just about two percent. Transfer from fund balance, which I'll get to later, that is only to fund items that have been, where we've received grant funding or state funding previously, but have not spent all of those funds. So we're simply carrying those funds forward, and then a couple of smaller out and interest in logistics and fees on taxes, franchise taxes and other tax fees, and then as little as we can get in other revenues that don't fit into those other categories. Our expenditures and how we spend all of that money, twenty-seven and a half, twenty-eight percent of that goes to public safety. That includes our sheriff's office, our EMS contract, our nine-one-one, emergency management. This includes building inspections, which surprises some people, but that is a public safety function. And it also includes medical examiner, which is a very small expense. Next is social services, which includes DSS as well as child support. And this is all funds. We receive state, state and federal reimbursement for sixty-four percent of all of that. Education, including our public schools' current expense, our forty forty-two capital outlay, and our contribution to AB Tech comes in at sixteen percent. Health and human services, which is our health department, and our contribution to, via health, for mental health. General government includes pretty much everything else, finance, governing body, tax office, register of deeds, all those things that are general government. Transportation is our transportation authority. It is high this year due to a capital outlay request where we're getting eight new vans. We were supposed to only get four, but the four that we're funding for the current year aren't going to happen in next year, so we're going to have two years worth of funding in one year, and there's revenue to offset all but ten percent of that on the vehicle side. Debt service is going down a little bit because we're making payments on our cooperative extension, being a small, a small payment, and then a significant payment on the jail. Economic and physical development includes our economic development budget. It also includes our nonprofit funding and our funding for community clubs. Culture and recreation includes libraries and parks and rec. Capital outlay, we discussed earlier, we have a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for capital outlay, and then a hundred thousand dollars in contingency, and then seventy-five thousand dollar transfer to start setting aside money for the two thousand twenty-eight revaluation. We expect to need to put seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars aside every year until then to be able to have all that money available for that six to seven hundred thousand dollar expense when it comes up. Property taxes estimated on ninety-five percent collection rate, again, increased from fifty-two, fifty-five percent. We, at fifty-two cents, our fifty-two are thirteenth from the bottom in the state. Fifty-five, we will be tied for twentieth, assuming, and obviously, the others will change, so we don't know exactly what we'll do. And we don't make that decision based on how we rank. That's just information to know. Estimated revenue from that property tax is ten million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. It's a half million dollar increase over the current year. And again, we reduced our prior year estimate to four hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. We believe we will meet that just based on collecting the immediate past year and year before. We get a lot from that. We're reducing our property tax interest revenue for the same reason that we're reducing the back tax revenue, and the vehicle tax revenue is going up about fifty thousand because people are getting new vehicles and because that rate increase also applies there. Sales tax, we're projecting, again, at the current two-cent rate, that we will increase by five, a little five percent. That's a hundred and, almost two hundred thousand dollars for a total revenue of three point nine million. That includes, a portion of that includes the forty forty-two funds. That's Article forty and forty-two of that sales tax that goes to schools. This does not include any revenue from additional portion of sales tax because that is not, we're almost a year from that being voted on by the people. If that does pass a referendum, then the board would act immediately at that point. But it will have little impact on this year's budget if it indeed passes. If it does, we'll address it next opening of May. Intergovernmental revenues, in sheriff's part, we, oh, I've seen this increase about twenty-nine percent. That's a large increase from non-county funds. The largest increase was seven hundred eighty thou, eighty-nine thousand. That's the net increase. It's actually over a million in actual revenues. Seven eighty-nine net increase in sheriff's office revenues for housing of juvenile inmates. Five hundred forty-five thousand in federal and state funds for the new vehicles. We talked about fifty-four five on the expense side for the county's match for that. The increased vehicle, the surplus vehicles, we've got a line of about three departments who will use those for their own purposes, so we won't have to buy new ones for them. And then we will sell the surplus with the remainder. Some of those are lift vans that can be quite valuable as we're trying to sell those. And then we have two hundred forty-three thousand dollars revenues for social services administration program, and then ninety-three thousand in Appalachian Regional Commission funds for the Madison Community Bridge opioid initiative at the health department. Revenue from fund balance, we talked about. That is only money that has been, it's basically restricted money. We're not taking anything from the unrestricted portion. It's two hundred thousand, and we have about seven hundred thousand in Medicaid cost settlement funds, which we receive as a provider at the health department. And that comp, we read in the news all the time about how providers are saying Medicaid doesn't reimburse at high enough rates. Providers receive this to make up for that once a year, and as a provider at our health department, also receives it. So this will go into the office setting, some costs at the demo center and things like that, and we'll still have a half million dollar reserve there for that. We also, actually, only a hundred and seventy goes toward that. Thirty thousand to set up its own building maintenance line at the health department because they can do some work that's related. because they can do some work that's related to Medicaid services on their buildings. They're also some carry forwards and grant funding. On the expense side, a hundred sixty thousand dollars included for public school current expense to implement phase one of the required reduction in K-three class sizes. Sounds like a very good move, but the legislature did not provide the funds to go with it. So our Board of Education is estimating they'll need about three hundred and forty within two or three years to fund all of the positions that will be necessary. This funds two teaching positions and two teaching assistant positions to implement first phase of that next year. And then that runs our total. We've had a twenty-two percent increase since twenty-fourteen in that. That's very progress for the county. But again, best best scenario, we're probably in the mid-seventies in our ranking there. Just like the property tax, we don't base things on that, but it is important to pay attention to. And then a million dollars in the forty-four-two sales tax funds from that three point eight in revenue earlier will go toward the loan payment for the schools as well as additional capital outlay they need. Wrong heading here, but five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, this is employee salaries and benefits, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to cover increased employee salaries and benefits. That includes the two hundred and eight thousand for retirement and health insurance. We will receive an eighty-one thousand dollar reimbursement for any those departments where the state reimburses us at sixty-four percent, we'll receive that back. So when you're looking at the county funds, you're pulling out the retirement contribution, health insurance, bringing everyone to ten dollars an hour. And we also have a small amount in there to fund the salary study to see where we may have other issues that need to be addressed. And we start to develop plans for how to tackle those probably over time. But we do need to have some expertise in looking at that. Some other expense highlights, seventy-five thousand dollars is set aside for the property tax rebound. Continues to fund a hundred thousand dollars in grant matching for economic development. That comes from that additional sales tax money we started receiving in twenty-sixteen. This year, we use those funds to match two grants to expand internet service in the county. It also continues thirty thousand dollars. And I can't say, I won't say on the grant matching, having that in the budget is very important because in the past, we have, we want to go after grants if they fit what we need and want to do in the county. If we have the matched money, it's nice not to have that be a barrier. If we don't spend it, we don't use it, and it goes back into fund balance. Thirty thousand dollars for drug treatment court, partnership with Yancey and Mitchell Counties. They're also putting in thirty to share, each get a third of the coordinator. We've got ten people enrolled in that, which is basically where they thought we'd be at maximum capacity. So it's very successful after about seven months of operation. Small expense, but important expense, our animal shelter includes three thousand dollars to cover spay and neuter services there. Whenever we do that, that helps us make those pets more adoptable. And it assists our shelter in continuing their low euthanasia rates. The fourth question, I will say, it includes a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for capital outlay. It also includes in the sheriff's budget, eighty-one thousand dollars for three new patrol vehicles that will hopefully help get them on a rotation schedule because they're going to need at least two a year, probably three a year. And they rack up miles pretty quick on those. It also, from the hundred and fifty-one, there are options there that don't have to be figured out tonight. But it sets aside money either for doing the next phase of the courthouse, which would probably be the first floor, finishing the renovations there, getting handicap accessible, multi-stall restrooms that can accom- accommodate a crowd that is at a meeting or a court during a break. Because we basically have two single stall restrooms down there serving everyone. It will also create a secondary exit, which this building does need. The other option on that is we potentially, as we're paying off cooperative extension, may look at, we can figure this out by August, looking at some loan options to look at financing the entirety of this building and getting it finished. And also looking in that process at adding on to our animal shelter. They've been raising money for three or four years for that. And also renovating the senior center as we discussed. Are there any questions at this time?
All right, before we come to the board questions, at this time, we will open the public hearing. And we have several people who have signed up to speak. Forrest will be our timekeeper, and we will use the normal time limits. We do ask that if you would, speak at the podium. And I think it will pick up well, but if you would, would speak up. And I hope I pronounce these names correctly. Apologize, I apologize in advance if I don't. He's bringing her mic over too.
And that microphone, if you just want to slide, if you turn your head to the right, it'll pick up every word you say.
Good evening, again.
My name is Tricia Rusko. And I have to leave this office to get anything I want to tell you. I've been a Madison County resident for the past way and a half years. Moving to Madison County has turned out to be a wonderful decision for me, being able to enjoy the sheer beauty of this county and the kind and caring residents who are now my neighbors. I work with friends of Madison County Animals. And through our spay and neuter program, I've had the privilege of getting to know our animal shelter director, Angela Davis, and her hardworking staff. Recent news stories reported that Burke County Animal Shelter has been euthanizing seven of every ten dogs and cats that can, that pass through their doorways because Burke County Animal Shelter has been understaffed, underfunded and undersized for decades. Those circumstances are now changing due to residents' insistence. Our shelter euthan- euthanasia rate, as you mentioned, is eleven percent, which is amazing. Shelter work is exhausting and often emotional, and euthanasia is heartbreaking for everyone involved. Two of our animal control officers recently resigned to move on to different jobs. Angela, the director, has started participating in a local animal transport program that takes adoptable cats and dogs from our shelter to states where mandatory spay and neuter laws have been so successful that they can import animals from here and take in animals from other areas of the country. Angela has connected with the ASPCA Spay and Neuter Alliance Animal Hospital to have veterinary, fourth-year veterinary students come in every Friday to the shelter, where they do well checks on all the shelter animals, blood work and other tests, and advise treatments, making the pets even more adoptable. Eventually, they hope that these veterinaries will go home and work in their own shelters. My concern today is that there is a good chance we might lose our shelter director and her dementia staff to other shelters advertising much higher wages and bedding a better working environment, such as the Burke County is now offering. Our shelter is also undersized and needs renovations and more space. The good news is that we already have capable, proven and passionate leadership, the shelter director Angela Davis and her staff. But we need to reward and encourage them. So I'm respectfully asking you to raise my property taxes since I'm all over here. Not just my dog, hopefully, every time. Add a proportion of that revenue directly and immediately allocated to our Madison County Animal Shelter for salary increases and renovations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann, is this Cook?
Zook.
Zook. Ann Zook. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Ann Zook. I've been hot six years. We've painted cats here for fifteen years. I also work with friends in Madison County Animals. Been here seven years as a volunteer. It's a nonprofit group here in Marshall, on the island now. We do all kinds of animal care. We get the spay and neuter done and all of that. There's no way this is all volunteers. Now, the tax issues at this budget meeting, we have, we have, but then, I think that we should reduce the taxes. This is my feeling. I, I think we need it for EMS, and we need it for schools, and we need it for animals and all the other things that you all are concerned about. I'm not going to comment on schools or EMS, but on animals, I do know a lot about it. I've been in the field for seven years with animals and owners and all the problems. Ms. Davis has reduced the euthanasia. It was over ninety percent when I started working some years ago. They need funding for replacing these animal control officers that left, gone to other jobs. She's doing it a lot like now. And you can't find animal control officers or shelter workers. Those are the people that work in the shelter, feed water, clean up after the pets. Seven days, they would leave them with the shelters and everything. You can't find these people just anywhere. And then, you know, control officers also have to be trained. But she's not going to be able to hire these people without adequate wages. My concern is if we lose animal control or the shelter because we don't have the people working those jobs, which are difficult jobs, but the people have such a passion for the animals. If we don't have those people, we will lose our shelter and our control. And I can tell you from being in the field, that the community will have tons of problems with animals without animal control and without the shelter in the future. So that's my concern.
Thank you. Barbara Colson. Good evening, Barbara.
Good evening. I'm not sure that microphone is working.
It is.
It's picking up all the recording.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I would like to comment not on the budget itself, but on the value we as citizens of Madison County place on our town. Do we want to stand by helplessly and watch on our home or our neighbor's home burns to the ground because the money ain't allocated and the budget doesn't cover the upkeep of our fire crews? Are we satisfied with local fire departments having continual fundraisers just to survive? How many neighbors does it take to put out a burning house fire without hoses, water or ladders? Do we want our county's kids to get a good education so they can be the next generation of leaders, some of whom may be elected commissioners or state legislators? And do they get a good education when our county can't afford to hire the number of teachers necessary to comply with mandated smaller class sizes? Do we want our county workers to continue to stay working in our county because they're paid a living wage rather than working in other counties just to make ends meet? These are the people who are vested in Madison County because they live here and care about it. And according to Access North Carolina, a living wage in Madison County for a single adult is eleven dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour. This budget would bring all county workers up to ten dollars an hour, whether as single or parents. That's twenty thousand eight hundred dollars before taxes are withheld. And in today's economy, not enough to survive without being beaten into poverty. Over three thousand Madison County citizens are currently living in poverty. They're our neighbors and friends, and we don't even know about it because they're too proud and embarrassed to admit that they're having a tough time. Our Madison County population has increased by over a thousand in the past eight years. How can the county provide the same services that we need when they're in an increasing revenue? I know the standard vote-getting claim by politicians is, I'm against aging taxes. But this is your government, and it's been a start. Taxes are part of our commonwealth, an investment we all share. The commonwealth should serve a common vision. Citizens are financially responsible to maintain this commonwealth. Taxation is the investment we make to pool resources, to do public things together that we can't do alone. And it's an investment in the place you live. So I support this tax increase because without it, Madison County will become a subsistence place to live. The county manager spent countless hours calculating how much revenue could be generated by increasing the tax rate to fifty-three, then fifty-four, then fifty-five, then fifty-five to the tax rate. In workshops, commissioners concluded that the higher amount was necessary to continue providing the bare minimum services our county needs and that sharing the cost among all taxpayers was the most equitable way to do it. So I thank you for doing this thankless job to make our county and our lives better for all of us.
Thank you, Barbara. Carl, again, I may miss, Batshelder?
Batshelder.
Batshelder. Thank you, Carl.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There's lots of topics I could talk about, but we'll stick to, to budget things. I attended one of your budget workshop sessions at the library. Very informative. I was especially kind of taken aback with the school superintendent and his concern over unfunded mandates regarding the reduction in class sizes over the next few years. And, you know, the projected growth in student population, especially open also with the new balance fund. So I fully stand behind the proposed tax increase. And, you know, I really, I have no problem that folks do well by money. I know Forrest works hard at it, and it's not a trust issue. I've never heard him say that, you know, the county government is wasting money. I know they look after everything. Regarding the revenue from the housing of juvenile inmates, I'm kind of aware of that. But I hope that I, that, given you a number of arrests locally, I read about in the paper. You know, I hope the sheriff buddy has the surge space necessary for any problems that crop up here. He does a great job. And as far as the minimum wage, that's money well spent. It immediately gives me concern, if I understand, if it's the minimum wage for employees. I need to be thinking about any people that are, a pay grade or two higher than that than now. They see that the entry level folks that are coming in the door are a little bit closer to what they might be making. But I understand, even though I do so much, the board has my support pretty much.
Thank you, Carl. Having no other people who have signed up to speak, we will move to close that part of the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close that part of the public hearing? Have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay. Public comment has been closed. Let's all raise our right hands. All in favor? Okay. Now it is time for the board to discuss. And I will ask for comments, questions from the board.
Well, my comment to start off with, Jimmy, get the microphone out. I appreciate everyone coming tonight and those that spoke. Not anyone that spoke made reference to the reevaluation for our property. That will affect, maybe affect your taxes, and they will go up maybe. I cannot support a tax increase unless I have all the findings of the reevaluation. And that is my reason for not supporting the proper tax increase.
Anyone else?
I, I support it. I think we've been stuck in nineteen eighty-five for too many years. And I figured I'd come here today and people just raised a hell about the taxes going up. So it's kind of nice to hear people, because Forrest did do a good job on letting you know what the money will go for, from the schools to, to new vehicles, to, to, you know, all the stuff in there. But, you know, we've got people here that's making eight dollars thirty-nine cents an hour. How would you like, they've had one percent, some of them about one percent in ten year rate, two. So five hundred dollars a year. So how would you like to go back to two thousand nine and live off what you did then? It's, I mean, it's just that plain and simple.
I echo his, his comments. And the other thing is, we have to do something. We, we, we talked, we had this discussion. If we don't do this, what are our alternatives? We were silent because there aren't any alternatives. Even if we wait on, on something else, we're never going to have all the details in. We were elected to make these hard decisions, and I think that's, I think that's why we're here. We have to do something for these people who are barely getting by. We are becoming a place where people wipe their We are becoming a place where people wipe their feet as they go to another location to work. And if eight dollars is coming out, I'm like, really? Really? And we go, we, we've got to make better things from there. And, 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 and the schools. We're proud of our schools. We're proud of our children. They're, they're not asking us whether or not we are going to do this mandate. They're telling us, if we don't have another alternative, how are we going to do it? We're not, we're not doing our job. I don't want to do it. No one in their right mind wants to raise taxes, but sometimes that's just the way of the people you put here have to make those decisions. So, thank you.
Mary?
Well, I'll go on record and say I'm not in favor of a tax increase. Um, I do, uh, I, I appreciate the work and effort that Forrest has put into this budget. There's no doubt in my mind, he's gone over penny by penny. Uh, Forrest, uh, has, in my time on this board, Forrest has always impressed me with the way he handles and manages our budget, and I respect and appreciate the way he does that. Um, my concern and, and my reason for not being in favor of the tax increase is, we've got an awful lot of people who don't have the luxury that many of us in this room have, and that is the luxury of being able to afford the tax increase. There, for, for every person who's in here, I'd hate to fathom a guess, the, the percentage of people in our county who are on fixed incomes that cannot afford a three-cent tax increase. And, uh, while I feel for our employees, I love and respect our employees, I appreciate our employees, and I'm here to, to try and find other means to properly compensate those employees. Um, I don't, I think it's worthy to mention, every full-time employee in this county got a five-hundred-dollar raise, whether they want to look at it or not, because that's how much their health insurance went up. The average employee in North Carolina, that's not state employee, this, this, I mean, a state employee, this includes state employees, private employees, uh, you know, those in the private sector, when I say private employees. The average employee in the state of North Carolina pays twenty percent of their health insurance premium. Ours pays zero. Now, to our young employees, that doesn't mean much, and I understand that, because I was young once, too, and it didn't, it wasn't important to me at that time. Uh, now I'm closing in off, getting very close to closing in on fifty years old, and I have a family, and I have a young, beautiful young daughter, and, you know, health insurance and benefits are much more important to me now than they were when I was starting my career. Um, I, but I, I don't think, I, I, I don't think that gets, that carries enough weight, not only with our employees, but with the public, exactly how much of a benefit that is. And, um, I, I would, I would be more in favor of trying to institute some sort of a tiered system where we, where, where we do an incremental increase on their wages and, and try and help out that way, so that it's not a big, a, a three percent tax increase right now. Facing a reevaluation in twenty twenty, um, that, that most likely is going to affect everyone in some way or another. Um, and while I greatly appreciate our employees and appreciate the job that they do, I was elected, I feel, to try and look out for the taxpayer, and that includes the taxpayers who are not able to come here and speak for themselves. Um, based on our conversation, it's kind of the writing on the wall, I think, is, is which way things are going, but I, I gra- I greatly appreciate the effort that was put into this budget and going forward. I will continue to strive to do anything I can, as I know Forrest and our staff in the, in the finance department will try any way they can to try and save money for this county and get maximum usage out of what we have, and, um, I'll leave it at that.
All right. There are points at which we make critical decisions. Tonight, we are faced with what I believe to be a clear choice. Do we continue the past, or do we bravely go where we need to go into the future? In order to have the revenue to begin to address generational neglect in Madison County, I support the tax increase and the full budget. There are two significant things that Madison County must do if we are going to provide for the future. Number one, we have to hire, retain, and adequately compensate the public servants who make this county work. Ten dollars an hour is a beginning. Adjusting the other wages is a beginning. We cannot do that without providing a dependable revenue stream to do that. That's a direct return to those employees and their families who live here, and to all of us who are provided the services. The second thing, we have to invest in our very badly neglected public facilities from this building on down. That's not magic. It doesn't happen. It has to have revenue, and it has to have a source of revenue. The school system has made remarkable progress in the last decade. And our alliance with AB Tech, and I'm very happy to see AB Tech folks here tonight, the construction of the Early College, and the progress which has been made in the school system across the board. We have a school system that ranks thirteenth in the state of North Carolina, and it does that operating on a bare-bones budget. Now, we have been able to raise that from the nineties till we hope into the seventies. But we must continue. That is our investment in the future, and to fail to do that, I believe is irresponsible. With all due respect to my fellow commissioners. Is there any other discussion, gentlemen? The chair will move.
Mr. Chairman, before you all do that, due to, uh, we gotta do the little Wanda Green disclaimer real quick.
Okay.
And I'll walk out.
Please, go right ahead. I was jumping ahead.
If you all will look at the, those orders in front of you, I'm not going to look through every page of it, but this is what you're adopting. Uh, no matter what the numbers are, uh, section one and two have all of their numbers that we just talked about, the general bond, and you're saying, stating that if it goes in those areas, um, it can be moved with amendments throughout the year. Sections three and four show the revenues and expenses for each of the fire districts at their current rates, no increases. Section five is the vehicle tax fund and the portions that can go to each of our municipalities. Uh, section one's revenue, one's expense on each of the. Sections seven and eight are your revenues and expense for the TDA, you're authorizing those. Sections nine and ten are your nine-one-one telephone surcharges, uh, section and your nine-one-one, uh, admin addressing fund. Section eleven and twelve is your landfill fund. Section thirteen and fourteen is your soil and water conservation fund that is funded from the sale of services that they do. Uh, section fifteen is where you set the tax rate that has the total, uh, estimated value in the county, um, and the estimated collection rate for both real property and vehicles. Section sixteen sets the compensation for the members of the board, there is no change from what has been in existence, uh, for several years. Section seventeen states that the county manager will serve as budget officer. It authorizes the budget officer to transfer appropriations, uh, under the following conditions. Uh, between my items, when it's finished within, within a department without limitations of any time within a department, let department heads leave that decision, they can move office supplies for fuel and stuff like that. Section B, county manager, uh, can do interdepartment transfers within the same fund, not to exceed ten percent. So we could move fund monies on this number of ten percent from economic development to inspections, uh, and would notify you at your next meeting. We don't actually do that, we put it all on the budget and, and, and we're very good at it. Inter-fund transfers, where we take something, uh, that, uh, that if they're established in the budget, such as a transfer to the rebound fund, that can be done without your approval, because you're approving it in this budget. Um, the county manager is restricted in section eighteen from transferring appropriations as contained herein, uh, cannot utilize contingency unless the board approves it. Uh, no salary increases may be made without board approval, except when grants ran according to the pay plan already adopted, so we have people who have benchmarks they need, when they meet those, they'll get them. Inter-fund transfer monies that have not been authorized in the budget can only be done with board authorization. No travel advances may be made without written permission of the county, uh, manager. This is our budget, it will be our fiscal basis, uh, base of operations for coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. The chair will move that we approve the proposed budget by the county manager. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor of approving the budget as proposed, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the budget passes three to two. Being no other business to come before this meeting this evening, the chair will move that we adjourn. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your right hand. Thank you for coming.